Getting started. That's loud. All right. Welcome, everybody, to the 2025 Granville Town Meeting. To assure you all know my name, so if you know me, some of you don't, my name is Kelly Eckraff. I'm pleased to be moderating our town meeting. According to Vermont state law, town meetings in Vermont are governed by state law as well as Robert's Rules of Order. In brief, this includes that you may speak twice on an article, once when called upon by the moderator, and then again after everyone else has had a chance to speak. We ask that you stand if you are able, state your name clearly so that our town clerk can accurately record who is speaking. Only warned articles can be considered today at town meeting. No articles or subjects may be raised that did not appear in the warning. Once an article has been decided, whether voted up or down, it cannot be reconsidered after the Assembly has taken up work on another article. For an article to be reconsidered, a new warning and meeting are required. While Robert's Rules require a majority vote to request a paper ballot, state law permits seven voters to request one. So if at any time here voting on an article, somebody says, "I would like a paper ballot," we do need seven people to do that. Otherwise, it will be a vote on the floor as we move each of the articles forward. Anybody who is not a registered voter in the town of Granville is welcome here. However, you must refrain from voting on any article that is discussed here at town meeting. As I proceed, may I please see a show of hands of anybody who is not a registered voter in the town of Granville? Just a few people. Just note, you can fit, say, you can be here, but you may not vote. Okay. I'm going to start with some introductions. So with that, I would like to go around here to introduce each member of our, first, our select board, our town booth, and then our constable. So we'll start her with Bruce. If you would introduce yourself.
Bruce Hyde, Select Board.
Mike Caramo, Select Board.
Ken Beatty, Select Board.
Mark Bilal, First Constable.
Cheryl Sargent, Town Court.
All right. With that being said, we're going to move to open our first article. Do I hear a motion to?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All right. All right. Our first article is to elect all town officers as required by law. And the first article, or the first position is Town Meeting Moderator. I'd like to, does anybody open?
I nominate Kelly Eckraff, Second.
Second.
Okay. All of those in favor?
I move for nomination, Sees.
Thank you. All right. With that, anybody here in favor? Say aye. Opposed? All right. I will again be the Town Meeting Moderator for the next year. Thank you very much. All right. The second opening that we have here is for a select person for a three-year term until 2028.
I nominate Kelly Eckraff.
Second.
All right. Any other nominations? First, like, personal.
I want to close.
I second.
All right. It is so closed. All right. We will take this to a four vote. However, since there's no other opposition, it does need to be cast with one paper ballot. Although if it is not passed.
I'd like to move, we cast one paper ballot for Kelly Eckraff.
Second.
All right. Any, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. One paper ballot. Let's get some paper here.
Keep that on file for a year.
Okay. All right. Next is to elect a town clerk for a three-year term ending 2028.
Nominate Cheryl Sargent.
Nomination for Cheryl Sargent?
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay. Can we move, can we get a motion to close?
I move to close nomination.
Okay. Let's open the vote. All those in favor of Cheryl Sargent?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Cheryl Sargent is the town clerk for the three-year period. The next line item is to elect a town treasurer for a three-year period ending 2028. You want to move to open nominations?
I nominate Bruce Hyde.
You nominate Bruce Hyde.
What was it for?
I decline.
Nancy Needham.
That'd be a horrible treasurer.
Second.
You got me in a second. We're good. Hey, we're good. Okay. Any, any other nominations for town treasurer?
Move to close.
Move to close.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor of Nancy Needham for the three-year period?
Aye.
Any in opposition? All right. Nancy Needham, the town treasurer for the next three years. Okay. We open to elect a second constable for a one-year term ending 2026.
Next, yeah, Bruce.
I nominate Jen Stickney.
Second.
All right.
Move nomination, Sees. Second.
All right. All those in favor of Jen Stickney? For second constable?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations.
All right.
Give them hell.
Give them hell.
Does she get a badge?
No, she has no authority on that.
She should get it done, though.
It's like everybody's got one of them.
So next line is to elect a second auditor for a three-year term ending 2028. And this is, this is also a fourth paper ballot. However, if there are not two people, then we would take it to a four vote and cast one ballot.
I nominate Bruce Hyde.
Bruce Hyde. This is what we nominated.
Did you name an individual?
I also.
You seconded? Okay. Any other nominations for second auditor? Okay. Any move?
Second auditor.
Any motions to close?
There's no, there's no conflict because you have?
There is no office now, so.
Oh.
Yeah. I'm now his spot for this time.
He's no longer his spot. There's swabbing.
And my spot will open and we'll, we'll ask for people to fill that at a future Select Board meeting.
Actually, I think that's your spot.
No, it's, this is actually Roger's spot.
Oh, that was Roger's?
Roger's, no.
Wait a second. Let's nominate Roger.
I'm going to replace you.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta wrap this?
Too late.
Do we, anybody, motion to close the nominations?
I need a motion to close.
Second.
Second. Okay. All of those in favor of Bruce Hyde as the town treasurer? Or town auditor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. One paper ballot must be cast for Bruce Hyde. Okay. The next line here is to elect a delinquent tax collector for a one-year term ending 2026.
Motion to nominate Nancy Needham.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations for delinquent tax collector? Okay. Anybody move to close nominations?
A vote for the nomination, Sees. Seconded.
Okay. From a four vote. All those in favor of Nancy Needham to be a one-year delinquent tax collector?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Nancy Needham will be the delinquent tax collector for a one-year period.
Whether she knows or not?
Yes. Next line is to select, elect a first cemetery commissioner for a two-year term ending in 2027. Any nomin, anybody move to open nomination?
I nominate Kate Stouse.
Kate Stouse. Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Anybody second that?
Seconded.
Second.
Seconded?
Oh, thank you.
Any other, any other nominations on the floor? Anybody move to close nominations?
Move to close nominations?
No paper ballot for me.
No paper ballot. No, no need for paper ballot. Let's open up the floor for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Okay. Kate Stouse, you are the first cemetery commissioner for a two-year term ending 2027. And the last line item here is to elect a third cemetery commissioner for a three-year term ending 2028.
Just thinking you could serve with me and Cheryl.
Who's the girl?
Oh, we are.
North? No?
No.
You could walk there.
He's degrading. He's degrading.
I nominate William Brokoff.
What's that?
I nominate William Brokoff.
William Brokoff? Okay. Second, on William Brokoff? Okay. Any other nominations this time? Okay. Well, any, move to close nominations for?
Move to close.
Move to close.
Seconded.
Awesome. Okay. Okay. Let's take it to a four vote. All those in favor of William Brokoff as the third cemetery commissioner for a three-year term ending 2028?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Okay. William Brokoff, you are the third cemetery commissioner for a three-year term.
Three.
All right. Okay. Okay. And any, I move to open Article Two of our list.
I move Article Two to four.
Any second?
Seconded.
Okay. And this is the Select Board Report.
Okay. There's a written Select Board Report on page 13. I'm not going to read it to you, but I'm going to go over the highlights for you. Last year, we had a huge bump in our tax rate, and it was due to the school tax, the state education tax. And we're probably going to get another bump this year, too. We are in the midst of a reappraisal, a town-wide reappraisal, which should help down the road a little bit. But we haven't had one in 2007. So there will be winners and losers in a reappraisal. Some houses, you know, everyone's going to at least double, I would expect, from the last almost 20 years. But if everybody doubled, then the taxes we pay would be the same. But there's going to be some houses that have had more improvements, some that have had less. So that's where winners and losers come in. The, we, we depend a lot on our Regional Planning Commission, Two Rivers Out of Queche Regional Planning. And they take on more and more of our administrative burden over the years. They acquire a lot of our grants, follow our grants, and it's not, no easy task to do that. We have an energy efficiency grant of a half a million dollars. It's a federal grant. That would be for this building. Everything from new heating systems. They could put solar, they could put heat pumps in, insulation. And that is in the process now. Who knows what's going to happen to Washington? But that's, that's a grant that the town has that should be a no-match grant. So it's all our tax dollars from the feds coming in. We also have a grant for this building to become handicap accessible, another federal grant. And that's in the works, too. And hopefully, that will be that implemented, and the federal dollars will come through. We've gotten a number of grants a couple of years ago. We redid the steeple. And again, that was a small batch by the town. We put in windows and insulated windows, both on this floor and upstairs. And again, that was done with grant money. We're looking for a federal grant, an earmark, if possible, on fixing up our firehouse, which needs, needs quite a bit of work. And that's in the queue, but there's no, no news on that at this point. We continue to update our Municipal Emergency Response Plan, which has to be done every few years. And that is when there's a flood or there's some kind of natural disaster. Well, how does the town work with state and federal and local entities through any kind of emergency? Floodplain regulations are up for approval this year. It makes it more difficult in the floodplain to rebuild or build. And these are, again, required by the state and federal government. There's also concern about contiguous forests. At least, I would have concern, and I think Granville should also have concern, that the state has now made a plan, almost like wetlands, with contiguous forests. Where if you have a contiguous forest, you get limited on what kind of development can happen on there. So that's another thing to watch. And we have plenty of forests in the Green Mountain National Forest that we probably don't need to preserve a whole lot more, more forests, you know, in town. But that's, again, my editorial. On page 29, I'll jump right to the road report, too. And people have got to realize that we have no road department. We contract everything out. A big thank you out to Shane Elwell, who's been doing our flowering now. My roads have been plowed better than they have in many years. He's doing a great job. All the winter maintenance, our grading, our ditch work, our gravel restoration, all emergency repairs is all contracted out. So when you see the contractors out there, give them a thanks. You know, they're not town employees. They're people that get awarded a contract on a competitive bid most of the time and do a great job. We're lucky to have local contractors that do that. Over the years, we have not done a whole lot of gravel on our roads. We are behind on replenishing the gravel on our roads. The bowl mill that we've got gravel for many, many years is no longer able to supply that gravel. We're going to have to get gravel from the further distance, probably at a most, at a cost. You look at our road budget, we'll get into that when we get to the budget, but it hasn't changed a whole lot. We have, by state law, we, we take any capital, any, any road surplus goes into a capital road fund. And we now have a lot of money in our capital road fund from not spending it over the last few years. And we've decided that we will do a major gravel restoration, hopefully, this year, and take it out of our capital highway fund. We use a lot of state and federal grants. Every time there's a grant to do culvert work or hydrostatic improvements for water, we go after those grants. A lot of times, they're a 10% or 20% match. This, this fall, we did, we had a $20,000, $25,000 Dangerous Tree Grant that was no-match to the town. Whitney Tree came in and took out about 35 trees that were in the right way and ground the stumps down. They were here for like two days, and that was great. Again, it didn't cost the town, town anything. We've got to continue to be aware of changing weather conditions and climate change and all that. Because, you know, we've been very lucky. We're, you know, just north of here and just south of here over the last couple of years have had major flooding. Knock on wood, we haven't. We've been just lucky, I think. So, you know, I'm sure that we're going to have more of that in the year or years to come. And again, we just continue to try to work with our partners and contractors and Regional Planning Commission to, to help us implement and get some of these grants. So any questions?
Any discussion?
Maybe it's a question for when we discuss the budget, but what if the federal funding's not there?
We're in deep trouble.
Okay.
I mean, this whole state is in trouble with federal funding. We are, I think, the most dependent state in federal funding of all the states. Thank you to Sir Patrick Lakey and his many, many years of getting Vermont all kinds of money. And with the cutbacks thrown on down in Washington, who knows where that's going to land? But it's, it's not a pretty picture, I don't think, at this point.
So what's revenue, you know, is from?
What's that?
The revenue from the Forest Service, for example?
Uh, yeah. We get, we get about $40,000 or so from the Forest Service, you know, the pilot program. Who knows what's going to happen there? You know, there's been all kinds of talk that they're going to sell off national forests. They're going to do a lot more logging, you know? We've got to wait until the dust settles. I see our state rep is here. And if we want to give him a couple of minutes to say a few words, maybe he can chime in on all this stuff. Jay?
Absent objection is what you're supposed to say. How are you? Yeah. He's right. Vermont is entirely dependent on the federal government for a lot of things. I think, from a legislative perspective, we lawmakers have, we, we are no different from you all. We don't have any impact on those matters. But I will say that our state treasurer, Mike Pichak, and our federal delegation are being strategic and thoughtful about how we can maximize our significance economically and make sure that Vermont can be regionally significant economically. For anybody who has not met me, I'm Jay Hooper. I represent your town and four others, Brookfield, Braintree, Mandolph, Granville, and Roxbury. I'm in my fifth term. I served on the House Government Operations and Military Affairs Committee. And this session, for me, and for, well, hopefully, most of my colleagues, should all, should be all about the future of public education. I'm sure you've seen, the governor has a proposal about education reform that is maybe not well fleshed out yet and sort of the conversation is underdeveloped as a result. But the truth is that we, the Democrats, in the majority, hold all the cards. And if the administration has the ball, if you will, we have to figure out a way to, you know, work together. Because it was always going to be true that we have to build their proposal for us, right? So we're all on the same side. I will say, the legislature, for the first time in my nine sessions, is actually discussing the issues at hand. The Democrats and Republicans are not allowing rhetoric and politics to dominate these spaces. We are legitimately trudging through deep snow on some, you know, really dense material. But there's so much to talk about that we really ought to be meeting on Mondays as well as, you know, the legislative calendar is Tuesday through Friday. And I keep making the argument to my colleagues that Mondays, we ought to consider snow days. Because we're going to be there in June and July, and maybe August. Because we can't buy down your property tax rates for the, I don't know, sixth or seventh year out of the last 10 with money that we only have right now and we won't have again if we don't have a plan. There's no point in, in investing in sort of no direction. So my understanding is that this town had a property tax spike that was pretty significant.
38%.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I rounded it up. 40, right? Like, is the number in my mind. And I can't say to you all that I am entirely confident that the legislature is going to do something. But I will say that I have spent all of my time in the legislature, in the State House, making sure that if I can change that, it does get changed. So I don't spend my time in my committee. I spend my time in House Education, Senate Education, Senate Finance, and not so much yet in House Ways and Means. But these are basically the four committees of jurisdiction when it comes to taxation and education spending. When we think about increased education spending, we shouldn't think about that being a thing that, you know, ed spending is something that we should want to do, right? It's the, the revenue part that we need to figure out. We have a really complicated math formula when it comes to per pupil spending and averaging, you know, what are the variables we put into figuring out what the cost is per pupil categorically, one to another? Geography is probably the number one variable. And I think you folks in Granville probably know that pretty well. By the way, if you have any questions or would like me to speak to a certain thing, do pipe up. Coming into Town Meeting Week, I'm not impressed that we don't have more to tell you. But I will say that I think it's going to be mapping that will get us a path forward. We're going to figure out direction as to the future of public education based on districts. The governor suggests five, right? That's probably too few, probably way too few. But that was probably a launch point, and it wasn't a legitimate suggestion. He's trying to say to us politicians, fewer is better. Understand that. I have been fielding preference from my colleagues, mostly in the House, but also some senators, asking the question of, okay, if you had to pick how many districts, how many would you pick? And if you don't have a preference, do you think you might have a range? Of course, these suggestions have been based on no data, just hunches. But I can tell you that the most common response I've received is the number 17. And the reason is because there are 17 career technical education centers in the state. And so if, if we can figure out a way to make our districts based on what exists and then build around that, that, that could be healthy. I do think this is giving me a long conversation, five years at a minimum. I think the transition will take quite a lot of continued political strategy and policy effort. And I, well, I haven't become too worried yet, but I just hope that this doesn't become a partisan issue, as most things do. Gridlock is something that we can't have when it comes to deciding something that we all have to participate in deciding. And that includes all of you. My, one of my latest mantras is, there's only one future to public education in Vermont, and we don't know what it is yet. And the only way to figure out what that is is if we all turn over every stone. Pretty much, everything's on the table. We think that most components to our, our current landscape will change. That's going to be scary for a lot of people. It's going to be uncomfortable. The way I put it to my school board the other night is you'd be hard-pressed to have very many Vermonters give two thumbs up to whatever it is that we come up with. I'm hopeful, though, that more than half, you know, a significant majority of Vermonters could give it at least one sum to the affirmative. Currently, we're planning to make a plan. And the staging is going well, but it is slow. You know, inch by inch, brick by brick, we're going to have to work together to figure out what Vermont's ed spending looks like in the future and how to simplify the landscape. Any questions?
It's important to understand, too, that we don't vote on a school budget tonight here. Most towns do. Our school budget, it will be in May. And we don't have any real control over that anyway because all of the kids are tuitioning. So the schools that they attend set the tuition rate, and we pay the bill.
Well, I guess my concern is, will towns like Granville who have school choice, will that disappear? Will we be forced to send our kids one way or another?
I think choice is the thing that will expand. Choice is something that I think we depend on, particularly in towns like this.
Right.
And keep our education landscape versatile.
Yeah.
Choice with a capital C is the thing that Democrats, in particular, are terrified of expanding. We don't, they don't want to create a system that would allow for more vouchers and less investment in public education. You know, Democrats are fearful that the privatization of education could become expanded and on a permanent basis if we are to create policy that we didn't craft very meticulously, but, but somehow by accident created something that would become a lawsuit, go up the courts, and then on a national level, create an expansion of private education.
And in that sense, you're thinking that with school choice, most people choose to use tuition money to send kids to private schools versus the other public schools?
Yeah.
Okay.
It looks like they may limit the out-of-state. It looks like they may limit the out-of-state private schools from that, though.
Right.
Yes.
And fine. But I guess my concern is, like, in a town like this where there is very little local economy, we all have chosen schools for our kids that are along where we work. So if that is to disappear, how are parents supposed to make it work? Like, if they work in one area of the state, but the kids are going to school in another, sort of thing?
Sure.
Yeah.
So my understanding is you all have maybe about forty-five students going to close to twenty-five schools? Is that reasonable?
Well, we're combined with Hancock now, so I don't know if somebody from the school board can type in.
Do you have school board?
We probably have closer to ninety or a hundred kids that go to about twenty different schools.
Okay.
Between the two towns.
Well, now Rochester's closed. The residents of Granville Hancock that are over sixth grade, Rochester go to a handful of different schools.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that choice is entirely essential for towns like this one, and I don't, I don't see it going away. I think there are a lot of worst-case assumptions taking place in Montpelier from party politic, from a party perspective. That's the thing that I've been kind of trying to combat. We have a lot of work to do and we have hardly scratched the surface. And I think the thing about this conversation is it's going to take a lot of turns and it's gonna, we're going to talk about, you know, forty different iterations of this proposal as we construct it. And we might even revisit squares we were in previously, you know what I mean? And I think that the important thing for Vermonters to try and remember is patience is important when you react to the things you see and hear from the media and from special interests and try and kind of contribute productively to the, to a conversation that's off limits to nobody.
My name is Bob Reed and the local town I grew up. I can't speak for everybody else, but I can't take those hits for the next five years.
Understood.
Okay? So when you start to look at the CLAs and the complexity that's involved with that, you're locked in analysis paralysis with everybody out in Montpelier, everybody else in Montpelier. So we don't have time for that analysis paralysis.
Agreed.
Because it's going to come down to a choice. I'm going to vote with my feet. And when I do, when I vote with my feet, I'm out of here.
Right, I know.
Okay? You know, and you know, as a long-running subject, the taxes, I don't know how involved you are with it, the clean heat standard, the taxes that are associated with that. My primary two sources were, but I do have an oil burn, avoid. And when you look at the numbers and the data that's generated, just how much it's going to cost Vermont to implement this program and yet the repeal was just off to the side. Why? When it directly, if I reach into my pocket and give you twenty bucks, that's a gift. You reach into my pocket and take twenty bucks, that's, and when we start talking about the additional taxes associated with fuel oil, and not just fuel oil, we're talking about gas, we're talking about propane, we're talking about kerosene, you're going to push them on or down? You are. Is that something? What about people who are retired? They're on fixed income. How can they absorb that hit? Not, and you know, that's school taxes as well as, I call the carbon taxes, clean heat standards.
Yeah.
Okay? But these taxes just keep rolling downhill and it lands in our lives.
Sure.
And so when you, when we talk about the years that may be associated with the school tax, a lot of us may not have time. And that's the truth.
Indeed, we are on borrowed time. So that's, again, why I say we got to be meeting Mondays. And we have a lot of really difficult conversations to inch through. And you can't do it pretending like it's all good.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
And I think that that issue is benched at the time, tabled, you know, we're not going to, we are certainly not going to expand the clean heat standard. I think it's definitely under attack. You'll see members of the legislature trying to hold the line on that, but I get the feeling that we'll have to make some repeal compromises on that.
When you look at the numbers, we're here in Vermont, there's what, six hundred and thirty to six hundred and forty thousand of us? USDA says there's four point two million acres of forest here in Vermont. Each half acre of forest provides one ton of carbon offset. What are we doing? What are we doing? We have the most carbon footprint in our state and nation. We do.
Let's invite Bob to the State House.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm just throwing it out.
Well, Bruce, I heard, I see another hand.
I just want to say, you know, I was in the legislature the last time they did a formula called, they got rid of the foundation formula. That's what they're looking at now.
Right.
And they did this Act sixty, the state took it over, and it took six weeks. It took six weeks from when the Supreme Court said that you had to change your educational funding. And it threw the whole thing out the window in six weeks. They had to move law. Why is it going to take five years? And I know you can't answer that.
No, I actually think I might be able to. And the reason is, was, so this was when you were, you were a sitting representative?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what years were those?
In the nineties. It was like ninety-eight.
The lady was in diapers, so it's. The reason, Bruce, is probably because there is this philosophical apprehension that specifically Democrats have about what equity is in education. And we in Vermont have the most equitable education funding formula of all the fifty states. This is true on paper. It is not true, though, in reality. The practice does not line up with the theory. Any lawmaker who does, who offers the do no harm argument, and that is what the answer is, I think, to your question, why is this taking us so long? Because so many lawmakers would rather not look at the issue. They would rather take a philosophical and therefore sometimes fairly symbolic approach to the issue. Do no harm is the argument you'll hear from those who are concerned that we're going to set a bad precedent by accident. My response to that argument is doing nothing is harmful to more than just children, but also taxpayers. And we have to think about the well-being of children every time we talk about education. And if we're talking about protecting special, there are over twenty, there's almost two dozen special interests in public education policy discourse, and they're viciously defending their corner. Teachers, principals, superintendents, you know. We have to basically figure out a way to get those people, like, to give an inch. Everybody's got to give an inch if we're going to pay them off together. And it's remarkable to me to think that six weeks was how much time it took to correct a Supreme Court snafu, the Brigham decision, right?
Mm-hmm.
And now we've got to deal with Carson v. Macon, which is the question of how do we govern tax dollars as they might relate to religious institutions and other private schools that may or may not discriminate in the admissions office? Tough questions, you know? And so I've been trying to cheerlead, you know, I keep, Bruce probably wasn't one of these people, but a lot of lawmakers have huge egos and they really need to be encouraged when, they need to be, they need a pat on the back twice a day. Yeah. And it's about keeping their seats and stuff, and this is going to be about geography. So it's going to be a really tough conversation. And I, for one, am trying to keep linear the conversation that I'm courting, which is constant every day I'm up there, but also every Saturday, I have a radio program in Randolph. WCBR is the station, hundred point one FM, thirteen twenty AM. You can catch me live on Saturdays, but it's also a podcast on Spotify, so you can listen later at your own convenience. But I'm basically trying to chart a path towards some sense of direction so that next town meeting day, we have something really substantial to share.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So once we've spent all this tax money on educating children, do you have a plan on how we're going to keep people, young people in the state of Vermont and not let them go away?
That's a good question.
So they can put money back into the?
Great question.
State economy. Is there a plan for that?
Not yet, but like I said, we're planning to, we're planning to build a plan right now. And I really feel strongly that if we do this with discipline and consistent, a consistent commitment to the conversation, staying at the table, if you will, the public education reform will be the boilerplate for all other policy decisions. We have to start to work in tandem. The legislature suffers from this issue where we work in silos because we have hard powers who believe that jurisdiction belongs only to eleven or twelve on a certain committee. And, you know, by May, late May, we run out of time. We ran out of time.
Yeah.
Bullshit. Yeah. So I'm thinking that workforce development, population growth, climate resiliency, housing, saving rural healthcare, these are all going to be conversations that end up relating to whatever it is that we decide we want to do when we consider what schools in Vermont are too, or too, sort of, have too much deferred maintenance to fix up and reinvest in and would probably end up closing anyway while we think about where to rebuild regionally. A lot of decision-making to happen, but before all that can happen, we got to continue to set a table. We all want to eat at. Does that make sense?
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Forty percent jump. Where'd that money go, you know?
Any further discussion on the select board report?
We should all be paying for what the pieces are.
Okay. I move to, move forward with the next article. Article three, shall the town of Granville vote to accept a budget of four hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars? Can we accept the select board report? I should say that.
I move that we accept the select board report.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move forward to article three. Sorry about that. Shall the town of Granville vote to accept the budget of four hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars to meet expenses and liabilities of the town and authorize the select board to set a tax rate sufficient to provide the same? Anybody move to open this article? Anybody second?
Second.
All right. Discussion? Any discussion on?
Budget starts on page fourteen. There's a couple of, most of the line items have stayed pretty much the same. I mean, it's municipal budget's up two percent from last year. You'll see one big line item under the assessor, line ninety eighty, an increase of six thousand dollars. And that's to do this townwide reappraisal. The state has given us money over the years, but not quite enough to do a full-fledged town reappraisal. Pretty much everything else is pretty close to what we did this year. There's a few items in there that, like the White River Valley ambulance that we are obligated to pay, our solid waste district that we're obligated to pay. Both of those are based on population within the districts. And so there's been some increases there. I can go through line items, but if anybody has any questions on either page fourteen or fifteen.
I'm curious, is there a report to do the reassessment?
There is a required.
So many, so often or whatever?
There is. It's based on the color. What, how, how off are your recent real estate sales to the, to the assessed value?
Large.
They are very large. And that's, almost every town in the state got a letter from the state saying you have to do a reappraisal because that difference was too great.
The thing I don't understand, though, is isn't the CLA supposed to deal with that differential between assessed value and actual sales value? So why not just let the CLA do it and screw reassessment? But we want to have to pay for it.
Well, you know, I don't know if I were.
In some specific period?
The state is looking, taking that all over in a similar way, you know? I don't think they're going to, you know? But when people do approvals on a house or not, the values change pretty dramatically.
But the market tells you that, the sales price. So why not just let the CLA do it for us as opposed to paying for assessment?
That's one, that's one of the discussions, I think, at the state. At this point, each town is liable to do a reassessment when those, when those sale prices are out of whack with your assessments. And like I said before, if everybody doubled what their assessment is, you got your tax bill, if everybody doubled on that, then everybody would pay the same taxes. But some people's tax, you know, assessed value is going to go up more than that, and some people's are going to go up less than that. So they, it's really a snapshot in time, you know? So that, over the next year, the assessor will be going around to different houses. He's already gone around and seen outside of all the houses and structures, I think. That's pretty close, right, Cheryl?
Yeah, Route one hundred.
Well, but he's, over the, he's been our assessor for a few years. And he's digitized all our records, which is great. And he's gone out and gone out and looked at the different structures in town, has not gone into the houses or anything. And that's what happens now over the next year or so, is they'll be making appointments to go and, and really getting more of the gritty details of each building.
Any other comments or discussion on the budget?
So that's, that's the municipal side of it. The next page is on the, is on the roads. And like I said, you're going to see some line, line items on that that we are planning on using our road capital fund, which is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars right now, to do gravel this year. So when you look at the gravel line item on this, we actually reduced it because we know we had money in the bank to do gravel. We also have about fifty thousand dollars right now in this current budget for our roads to do gravel, too. And that's on top of the capital fund. So hopefully you'll see a lot of trucks and a lot of grading going on around town, around the dirt roads.
Is that going to go out to bid or?
What's that?
Is that work going to go out to bid? Will, like, the trucking and the work go out to bid or is there any assigned contract?
The, yeah, when we, we have a grading contract now for Shane Elwell. So he's, he's locked in. As far as all the trucking goes, yeah, we're going to need to have contractors come in and help us truck. Absolutely. Ken will be in charge of that, right, Ken?
Yeah, usually, historically, we've hired local trucks to do the graveling. We've hired, well, we hired Shane's truck before and Mac McGuffin and Charlie Smith, we hired him too, Dave Harvey, a few other ones. But we try to line up a fair amount of trucks, at least a half a dozen trucks, to do our graveling because our gravel has to come from a ways away, far away, Middlebury.
Middlebury, yeah.
So we'll, we'll need to hire a fair amount of trucks so that we don't have Shane just sitting there in the grave, greater waiting.
Any question?
Yeah. This question is for either of both Bruce and Ken.
Yep.
And I presume that since you're going to find people that have the biggest trucks possible to bring it, right? And you'll, you'll, you'll choose the least expensive truck, right? So that'll be a process where you guys will probably hit the most desirable of an undesirable thing. I live on a private road. We have to pay to have the stuff trucked in, too. Wouldn't it be possible that we could have the materials we've outlined trucked at the same time on the trucks that the town has contracted and edited? We, we, you know, basically speaking, we will have benefited by the deal you've gotten with those people. But it won't cost the town anything. We're not, we're not asking for the material. We're just asking if we could pay the rate that you're going to be paying to have it trucked over the mountain.
I would say no, right off. I think it would be a little bit too complicated for our truck drivers to worry about having two, two tasks to do.
Two what?
Two, two jobs to do. After the, after the fact, we could put you in contact with them and then you could hire them, but I don't, I don't think, I, I don't imagine that the town is going to get any special deal that...
Oh, they'll get a better deal than we get, probably.
Hmm, hopefully.
Well, yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully.
We're six people that are paying taxes like everyone else. And the two things we get here are the school, the schools and the roads, but we don't get the roads. And we'll accept that because, of course, we live on a private road. But this would be no skin off the town's nose to basically let us use the same, the trucking people at the rate you're getting it. Instead of telling the guy, you're going to bring forty yards, you're going to bring, you're going to bring fifty or sixty. And we'd pay for that additional.
Right.
I think that's something that, I mean, if we could table that, that could be something to talk about in future.
Well, I'd toss it up here now, and if you guys could order something like that out. It's, it's not going to toss taxpayers of the town a dime. It could save us some money. And I think we're already paying more than our fair share of costs.
Yep.
I don't think there's that much of a differential that, you know, if you're, if a truck's getting a hundred and twenty bucks an hour to truck it for Middlebury, for the town, it's probably not going to be much more for a private person to, to get it, too, other than you, you're going to be doing a smaller, a smaller amount.
Maybe for a private person than for the town?
We're looking at three thousand yards of gravel this year for the town, which is a lot of gravel.
Well, then, another way to think of it is if you buy that much plus some more with specify, we'd pay the town for it. We'd pay it cash to the town, and then we'd go pick it up ourselves.
Uh, I mean, we can look into that with the quarry, wherever we get it from.
Their quarry isn't, I mean, the, if they sell us three thousand yards, that's a small amount for their quarry. So I don't think, we're, I, we're not getting a deal. It's the same price that you're, you would get if you walked in there and bought a dump truckload of gravel.
Really?
Really.
Three thousand versus ten?
I don't think so.
I, I believe, I believe it's going to be the same.
It's going to be like this thing where one person talks and then...
I was going to, I was going to say, we need to open up for other people. Thank you. We need to open up for other people to ask questions as well.
I'm asking all, I'm just asking, for some relief for the people who live on my road for an item that would cost the town nothing. And if you could look into it, I'd appreciate it.
We'll look into it for you, Dick.
Really, Matt, like, and can some, I've not got a lot of history here, but from what I understand, we've got gravel locally, and now we can't. And it's going to cost a lot more. But evidently, is there some kind of permitting issue with the old location, the old building? It's like, is that ever going to get solved, or is there, is there any future solution to where we don't pay a lot of money for gravel?
No.
Okay. Is it, this former location is just no longer available? It's out of business and...
It's, the gravel's there, it doesn't have an Act 250 permit. The permit expired, and it wasn't renewed in time.
And I can't...
It's a lot of money to get a new permit.
Probably a hundred thousand dollars. You know? Yeah, I don't see that reopening in the, anytime in the near future. It would take, it would probably take a change of ownership and then it wouldn't be a, I don't, I don't see it happening. I should have asked this question when the state representative was here. He knew it was coming, that's why I left so quick.
Okay, any other, any other discussion items for the budget? Both of you have a note?
I'd like to, I, I, I walked up and talked to Robin because she's much better with numbers than I am. But I, this is the first, I think, any of us who's seen the fire department. And I, I, and I, I, I'm an English student, so I'll just put it out there here. But I, and, and these are really small, so try to find you to read it. But if somebody could just explain to me how, how we are level funding the amount that they're asking for, but it looks like there are increases throughout the budget. And I, I don't, I'm not seeing the budget funding difference. I, I thought it was made, but I, I don't understand the budget.
I might be able to, and I'm just guessing, I'm just guessing, but they've been really working hard on bids, right, for some of their stuff? And so it might just not, you might not see that, that they're spending more, but they're asking for level funding because we've gotten, I think.
Well, the Robin's side says that they're going to get three thousand dollars less for coin drops, six thousand dollars less for endowments, and five hundred dollars less from other donations. I mean, it actually, on the Robin's side, it looks like they're going to get less funding. So I, I just, I, I mean, I really just don't understand where the numbers are.
I'm not there anymore, so I don't know.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Is, is there anyone from the fire department who does understand this? Who might give a second?
I, yeah, I, I'm not entirely sure. Dan has outlined the budget for the coming year. But one guess would be the split between EMS services and fire services. I know a lot of fundraising was done for the EMS side this past year. I'm just wondering if it's not, so that would be my totally unimportant guess.
I mean, you know, twenty thousand dollars for the Granville budget is, is actually a fairly significant chunk. And I'm not, I'm not coming down on the fire department, we all know that either. But I, I also need to know how it's being dispersed. It would be nice to know how that is working. And I, I don't feel like we have a better picture here.
Unfortunately, we don't have a fire department.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have Daniel either.
Yeah, that's, Rob, Robin's point is well taken.
Can we move to table the fire department budget until we can get one clarity?
Well, we have a budget figure. We just, we just vote on the budget. We don't get to vote on any of the parts of it.
Oh, I understand. So we can either accept it or we can remove it, vote to remove it.
Well, I have, but, but I'd make a motion to level funding. It looks like there's an increase here this year of five thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Is that correct, Matt?
Yeah, so we have a little...
So it'd be level fund at twenty-one, two seventy-five?
But you guys are looking, you're not looking at the, wait, you're not looking at the view.
I don't know.
I'm looking at the book.
I'm looking at the fire service budget, page one or two on the handouts. And the bottom line is your increase, decrease, and right inside is fifty-two, twenty-five.
Right. I have a list of them, John, we'll get those. This is the first we've seen of this.
So anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm making a motion to increase the fire department budget back to twenty-one, two seventy-five. The budget was a line of four.
If it's removed, does that mean it doesn't get funded this year?
Right.
It is different. When the budget was prepared, we were told that level funding is what they wanted. And then when the report came in light, it was different.
Yeah, the, the, so our, our book that was dispersed with our warm budget has a total of twenty-six, one eighty-seven. It's twenty-six, one eighty-seven.
Well, it depends on whether it's...
In the book.
No, it's not fine, Brad.
No, you're going to make a guess.
They're...
Twenty-six, five hundred.
Twenty thousand is fire fire number, two thousand seven seventy-six is the end part of it.
That's right.
Wire Valley, Analysts.
That's right, that's right, okay. So that would be twenty, twenty-three and change.
We have two steps, two different numbers that we're working on. So, Robin, do you have a question?
Yes.
So regardless of what's on this piece of paper that the fire department provided today, what we're voting on is actually in the budget.
In the budget, right, which is the twenty thousand eight oh three and the twenty-seven seventy-six.
Yes.
So with respect to the motion, that's not even...
It makes it a move.
Why don't, I don't have the town...
I'm normally happy. One for household, you know?
Yeah, right now, we're considering the line item thirty-twenty, twenty thousand eight hundred and three.
That's right.
So the sheet that you picked up on the way in here is a new point, unless somebody wants to add that five thousand dollars to the budget. So right now, we're voting on twenty thousand eight oh three, which is...
Twenty thousand eight oh three as well as twenty-seven seventy-six for the EMS, for the Valley Rescue. And if we leave it as is, then there's no need to make a motion to change it.
So is the Valley Rescue, is that a White River?
Well, we have regular, which is an additional twenty-six, one eighty-seven.
That's the new name for the EMS services that we're going to require.
Valley Rescue Squad, right?
And that's the three towns, Roger, of Hancock and Rochester with us, and the Valley Rescue. We'll give you a minute if you want to stay around.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay.
I, I do want to go down to Hancock.
Okay.
So if you have a time for a break, I will be brief. I will not speak a long time.
Let's, we're going to get through the budget.
Why don't you wait, and we'll get through the budget and then we can hammer you.
Yes.
I'm sorry, too.
Okay. All right, so, so Roger, does that make sense to you now?
Yes.
To have the handout add five thousand dollars extra on it, we're not doing it.
Ignore the handout.
And I'm sorry I brought it up.
It is confusing.
Good clarification, thank you, Dick. All right, any other further discussion items or questions on the budget?
Well, that's the one.
Do you have any other discussions on the budget? Yes.
Considering that Dan made the budget, is there anything that we can call him in?
Well, I, that's, I think at this point in time, if we don't have anybody to speak on this, we're going to bypass the addenda or the update. We're going to stick to what we have in the book that was published.
Right.
And more.
I make a motion to select the budget as written.
Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
You said that?
Okay, thank you, John Clam. Okay, so, vote on the floor, all those in favor of accepting the budget as written?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the budget stands. And we're going to take a quick break. Senator Ruth Hardy is here, she'd like to speak with us for a few minutes, and then we'll get, give people a chance to go get something to drink and come back.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yes. Hi, everybody. I'm Kelly. Kelly, Kelly, nice to meet you. Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I am, sorry, I'm going to take a break.
No, no, we're not going to take it. We're taking a break so you can...
After, after she speaks, we'll, we're going to...
Yeah, Dick.
We're going to get through the party, move to speak, and then we'll take a quick break.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
I'm handing you the gavel.
Good, good evening, everyone. I'm Senator Ruth Hardy. I'm one of your two state senators, and I just wanted to come up to Granville and give you all an update. I will be brief. I heard you got a rather lengthy update at the beginning of the meeting, but I will just highlight a few things. I represent all of the Addison District plus Hancock, Rochester, Huntington, and Buels Gore. I live down in East Middlebury. In the Senate, I serve on two committees. I serve on the Finance Committee, which is one of the money committees, and also the Natural Resources Committee, which is a new committee for me, so I'm sort of getting up to speed on all those issues. But you probably have heard, and maybe Jay already gave you an update on the education proposal that's happening, so that's a major issue that we're working on and something that I'm spending quite a bit of time on from the tax perspective and the financing perspective. That's what the Finance Committee does. The Governor's proposal is pretty radical and would have big impact of, on districts across the state. And at this point, it doesn't really save any money, which is kind of the point. So we're trying to figure out, can we come up with something that would not completely disrupt our educational system and save money, which was the kind of the point of what we were hearing from voters last year? So that, that is a major focus. I'm happy to talk to anybody who wants more details, but if Jay's already gone through a lot of it, I don't want to repeat that. One of the driving factors for health, for education budgets is healthcare costs. I served on the Healthcare Committee for four years, so have worked quite a bit about, on that. And I have a bill this year that would implement a thing called reference-based pricing, which would allow the Greenmount Care Board, which is the state healthcare regular, regulator to require hospitals to only charge a certain amount for, in reference to our Medicare rates, so that hospitals wouldn't be able to charge as much. Our most expensive hospital in the, in the state is the University of Vermont Hospital, which is actually one of the most expensive hospitals in the country and is one of the driving factors for our really expensive healthcare rates. So we really need to get their prices in line with reality because it's really just driving up the cost of everything. So reference-based pricing is one option that could work along with a, a lot of other reforms that are necessary. There's a number of tax, income tax proposals on the table. I have a proposal about a tax credit for unpaid caregivers. These are for people who may be taking care of their spouse, their, their parents, an adult child with disabilities and not getting paid for it. There are over seventy, thank you. I've heard a lot of stories for, of people who, as my, on my time on the Healthcare Committee, who are in this situation, they get no help, no support, no funding. And this would just be a little something to give them a, a little bit of financial help. There are over seventy thousand unpaid caregivers in the state, and so it's not an uncommon thing, and, and I think these people really need to, to get some, a boost. In the Natural Resources Committee, we've spent a lot of time on a bill about salt because our rivers and our lakes and ponds have too much salt in them, and it's impacting life in the fish and the other aquatic life in them, in the lakes and ponds. But it also could impact our drinking water eventually. So we really need to lower our salt usage. And the primary source of salt is, of course, from roads, parking lots, sidewalks. So we're creating, or we're hoping to create a voluntary program for snowplow contractors and municipalities to get some training on how to use less salt. And that would then give them some liability protections if they use less salt and also save money on salt.
We use, we use no salt on our roads.
Awesome. So you're all right. I love it, I love it.
Other than Route one hundred, but that's...
We also talked about gravel.
Oh, gravel, ooh, okay. We're also working on bills about solar, trying to save the community solar programs. Last year, there was a bill that more or less did away their, with their financial incentives. So we need to figure out a way to save community solar. I do want to also talk about something that's gotten a lot of attention and just to clear up some things. Couple years ago, we passed a bill that was then known as the Afford... Couple of years ago, we passed a bill that was then known as the Affordable Heat Act. What it did was create a report, a study, on whether or not to implement the Affordable Heat Act. That study came back to us in January, and it's like 250 pages long. It's super big. I have not read the whole thing. But, oh yeah, exactly. When I need a good night's sleep. But the bottom line is that the results are that a project, a program like that probably is not a good fit for Vermont. We're too small. If we were a bigger state, if we were multiple states, then maybe it would have worked. So we are probably not going to do it. In fact, I don't know anybody who says we should do it because the results were pretty clear. There were some ideas in that report that we may pursue that are different ideas, but not the Affordable Heat Act or the Clean Heat Standard. So I know there have been people who are saying we should repeal it. There's nothing to repeal. It was not a project. It was never a program. So there's some language about the report and about data in the statutes, but there's not an actual program. So for anybody who was worried about that, I still get emails saying that we should repeal it, but there's not a program to repeal. So just so you know. Yeah.
Can I get a copy of that?
Of the report?
Yeah.
The 250-page report. I'll send you the link.
I'm cold.
If you email me. Well, I won't send you the actual paper. I'll send you the link to it, okay? If you really want to read it.
I'm cold.
I hear you. So just wanted to let you know. Also agriculture. I introduced a bill about, called the Farm Security Bill, that creates a program to help farmers recover from natural disasters, flooding, freezes, windstorms, et cetera, that we've seen a lot in the last few years. So this would be a fund that is set up that would be there for when farmers need it, that they could access quickly. And that just passed the Senate Ag Committee, so it's moving forward in the Senate. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get that up and running. So the last thing I just want to touch on is the federal situation. A lot of us are watching it very carefully because Vermont is heavily dependent on federal funding. And if, we've already seen some grants canceled. We've already had federal employees who are Vermonters be fired. There are 6,800 federal employees in Vermont. It's one of the major employers of this, in the state, in fact. So the federal situation could heavily impact the state budget, which would also mean school budgets and municipal budgets and all of our budgets. We are very, we need federal funding in Vermont. So we are watching that carefully. We're, I also think we need to be careful about what we do with school budgets in this time when there are so many things happening at the federal level. So I just wanted you to know that and know that we are trying to keep track of what's going on, but it's a little difficult right now. So I'm happy to answer questions if the moderator allows.
There's only, we have two questions.
Yeah.
Did you say that the Central Vermont Medical Center is the most expensive?
No, the UVM Medical Center. There are a lot of reasons why. One, because it has extremely high administrative costs. Two, because it is kind of a monopoly. There's not a lot of competition in our rural, small state. In fact, I just was listening to a podcast as I was driving up here that was talking about this, a Brave Little State podcast. The most recent episode is about this, so I highly recommend it. But it is, it is a very high-cost hospital. I could say a bit more. I don't think it's necessarily the most well-administered hospital. They really are charging way too much for patient care. They also, we also are using more healthcare in our state. And the acuity, meaning the sort of seriousness of what people are going to the hospital for, is higher. So there are a lot of things that are driving it. But really, the number, and also pharmaceutical costs are increasing healthcare costs. But our hospital costs are mainly.
John, I think had a question.
Yeah.
About the funding for agricultural issues. Is that like a loan or is that like grant money?
It's a grant.
So like, if we're in an issue like a flood, we just get money?
You, I mean, yes, that's the idea. It would be based on, I don't know if you, are you a farmer?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, did you apply, for example, for the B-GAAP program? Okay, there was a program started for businesses that provided grants to businesses after the floods the last two years. And it was called B-GAAP. And it was, basically, you applied, you had to show that you lost, you know, you had to prove you had lost something, either your crops or, you know, your business flooded and you lost product or whatever. But if you proved that you'd lost something, and then there was, be a certain percentage that you could get in a grant. It's not a loan, it's a grant. And it's meant to be fast, you know, like a turnover of a couple of weeks rather than the months and months that everything. So it wouldn't cover everything, but at least it would be a little bit of a charge of money to help you.
What was it called?
It's called the Farm Security Fund. And the bill number, I think, is S-60. It's, I just did an update that I sent to people who are on my email list, but it's also on your Front Porch Forum today, if you're on your Front Porch Forum. And in that is a link to the bill that you can take a look at, the Farm Security Fund Bill. Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question?
We've got two people with it.
Wait, who's next?
Oh, no, I was just going to say Medicare reimbursements for most hospitals, they make money on. UVM lost like $150 million on Medicare, which is unbelievable.
Right.
It's the biggest loss of any hospital in the country.
Wow, you, good job.
I think, is that right?
Yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right. That's why I say that they're maybe not the most well-run. Because most hospitals are able to break even on Medicare.
And almost half of the employees up there don't work with patients.
There's heavy administration, let's just say. Yeah.
Three more questions and then we'll wrap.
Yeah. When you commenced, the first thing that you discussed was education budget. And from where I stand, what I heard you say was that there really isn't anything we can do to lower the educational budget. And maybe we can.
Wait, who said that?
I thought you said that.
No, no, that's not what I said.
You didn't say, you didn't say that we should lower the budget or that we could lower the budget.
I think she said that what the Governor proposed wasn't actually much changed.
Right. What the Governor's proposed would not save money. Yeah, so the Governor's plan would not really save any money. It would make a huge amount of changes in our system, including changing the entire way we fund schools, but it would not save any money. I'm not saying that we shouldn't save money. We absolutely should save money. We're spending too much money on our education, broadly speaking, and too much money on healthcare, broadly speaking. The latter, healthcare, is driving, one of the driving costs of education. So we need to reduce both, for sure.
So we have three questions here. We're gonna, Ken, I think you were next, then Vicki, and then Mike.
I had a, I had a question, half a joint. So our river valley here is being encroached by knotweed.
Oh, yeah.
I was wondering if part of the farm, yeah.
Security.
Security program, if there, if you could help any of the farmers out with that problem. He's organic and can't spray the knotweed to get rid of it. And the other farmers down the valley are too. So the fields are all getting smaller and smaller. And I don't know if there's any plan or any money available for that to try to eradicate that.
This would not be for knotweed, but.
Well, I didn't say what, but.
Yeah, but if you email me or you email me, I.
If I'm a part two.
Yeah. I can probably, I don't have a.
I think Henry might have an answer on that.
Can I try to speak to the knotweed thing real quick and then we can back it?
These are all farmers.
Yeah.
There is federal money available for knotweed control through USDA, NRCS. And as far as the organic issue, I mean, as personal preference, NOCA does allow invasive control with chemicals as long as certain buffers are restricted between crop lands.
Yeah, we're actually getting ours sprayed this year.
You're getting yours sprayed?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, though.
We have to, we have to make up that buffer zone again, though. So now, three years, we can't use within like, what is it, 50 feet? Something like that. Of the knotweed control. Well, we are going to spray it.
But even if we spray it where we are in the valley, it doesn't, it will only last for so long.
You gotta start up in the Gulf and come down.
Sounds like they know more about it than I do.
Unfortunately, like, it's tied to individual landowners, but it's open to anyone. You don't have to be a farmer to talk to NRCS about getting that.
Hopefully, NRCS will survive the federal stuff. I mean, I know that NRCS and the USDA have already had a bunch of firings. So it's pretty worrying what's happening.
They've all got the letter.
Yeah.
Want two more? We have two more.
Vicki, so when you get back into session, I hope you can bury your teeth a little bit. I, you know, I thought it was the Green Mountain Board that was basically closing down physicians that we have so little access to. And I understand that it's really UVM because they're conglomerates. So get your teeth out.
Oh, yeah. Believe me, I already have my teeth out.
Because for our Central Vermont to have one less, you know, physician's office is ridiculous in a ski town where people get hurt.
I, believe me, I actually used to be on the Healthcare Committee and because I had my teeth out a little too much, I got removed from the Healthcare Committee because UVM did not like me. So I have been very, very vocal on this issue. And the Green Mountain Care Board is doing an excellent job of trying to rein in costs. It's not, it's not. They are trying to rein in costs and get things cheaper for patients. I, yes, and I have them on speed dial on my phone.
One more and then we're gonna take a quick break.
Yeah.
Just wanted to bring up on the education, this was brought up earlier with Jay. Appreciate the pushback against school choice that the Governor is promoting. But to keep in mind that we're all communities like this, school choice is really important. Transportation and parents, parents communities come into play an awful lot. And we are spread out for all the different schools that we, that our kids take advantage of.
Yeah.
It's important to keep some of that in for us.
Absolutely. I think there are different flavors of school choice. And what I'm really concerned about is the encroachment of vouchers and private school vouchers that would really destroy our public schools. So that's really what I'm concerned about. I realize that up here, depending on where you work and where you're close to and which direction you're, whatever, it makes, yeah.
150 miles away.
Exactly. And I actually literally talked to the Secretary of Education about Granville and Hancock and what her plan was for it. And she did not seem to understand. She was like, I don't know where that is. You know, so I'm really trying my best to look out for you guys because you're in a unique situation. And I don't think what fits other places necessarily fits y'all. So I'm trying to remember that as I'm thinking about it. But, so yeah, that's really what I'm talking about is the private school voucher system is challenging.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you all very much for your time.
We'll come back in five minutes on the dot. We'll start right back up. So aggressive.
I mean, I didn't, I didn't.
Okay, we're gonna get underway. One minute always makes three. All right. When our constable is back, we'll get started. Give everybody a second.
Larry!
I don't want to do anything without him here. Hurry up! He's our. If there's some. I did like, yeah, we heard it. It's very aggressive.
We're almost done.
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna start up. Okay, I wanted to get, Henry came back and he wanted to speak for one minute on an update just to explain the voluntary fire department budget. He had some points he wanted to share, and then we'll move to the next article. Henry, you?
Yeah, I'm Henry. For those of you who don't know me, I am the treasurer for the department. I'm trying to take someone down the load and make his life easier. He's got a lot going on. So I think the question was about the increase down at the bottom of the 26,5 versus the 21,275 with that 5,225 difference. That is just anticipated expenditure, not what we're asking for from the town. So what we're asking for from the town is up at the top under Granville appropriation. And that's remaining level at 20,800. And then the way we're able to make up that difference is the auxiliary fund transfers and then a little bit from the EMS shared building expense. And the reason that we have that auxiliary fund transfer is because we've built up our auxiliary fund over the last couple of years with fundraising and with, you know, you can see our spending in '23, '24 was not as much as our appropriation. So that's where that funding comes from. We're just applying it to our anticipated budget in the future to not have to raise taxes. So I hope that clears.
Much appreciated. Thank you so much. Okay, next, I'm going to look to open Article 4. Shall the town of Granville vote to authorize the treasurer to apply any surplus remaining from the highways budget current fiscal year into the Highway Capital Investment Fund? Anybody move to open this?
Move to open this question? Second.
All right. Any discussion on the floor?
Move to call a question?
Well, could somebody tell?
This is, this is what we do every year. The money in the highway account needs to be spent on highway, even when there's a surplus or whatever. It has to stay in highway. You can't use it on the municipal side. Every year, we always put any surplus, as we have done, in the Highway Capital Fund. And we've got about $130,000 in that now. And that's what we're going to be using to do major roadwork this summer. So the other option would be to lower, to lower the tax rate and just get rid of that money, you know? But we've always used it and we're gonna, believe me, we need it on our roads.
Is there a projected figure for how much you actually need for the roads this summer?
For the, for the graveling?
For these, for these projects? I mean, I'm just saying, $130,000 is a lot of money.
We, we have held off on graveling the town roads for the last couple of years in anticipation of getting the gravel at our local source. Therefore, we haven't bought a lot of gravel. We've bought some gravel and we've used some gravel on our roads. But now, the, the maintenance number that we need to get back to for, just to maintain what we have for roads is about 3,200 yards of gravel per year. And to bring it over from Middlebury, it's going to work out to be about $30 a yard to get it over here, including the trucking.
So it's like $90,000?
Yes.
I'm an English teacher.
Yeah.
So that's, so there's still under $40,000 that would be left in that.
Well, we're gonna do the best we can this, this summer. Like I said, we've held off for the last few years. That should have been 3,200 yards a year for the last three years. So I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money. It's a lot of gravel. The reason why we held off is because the gravel from the local source is $16.
Figures. $130 spending $90. That's all I was trying to figure out.
I mean, we're behind. It's, it's.
So I have a quick question. Have we achieved the proper ditching and? Have we achieved the proper ditching and culvering thing? So that we can preserve our gravel when it does go down on the roads?
We continue to grant what we can to upgrade our culverts.
I know we had a big plan, but I didn't know if we reached the end of the plan.
No, that plan keeps on going. And there's two sources of grants that we get every year to help us with different sections of the roads. We still have a lot of culverts that need to be replaced.
The gravelling is the next step in a lot of the projects that we've already done. So, I mean, it's not, we're not gonna be able to gravel all the roads with this 3,200 yards.
Right.
We're only gonna be able to do... We're only gonna be able to do a couple miles, realistically. It's, it's too bad. The truck it all the way over the mountain.
Call a question?
I called a question.
I called a question.
All in favor?
All in favor of the question or of the article?
What article?
The question was the article.
Of the question.
Please, for a second.
It was, I think.
Over.
Any further discussion, I should say? No?
One quick question. Ken, where are the worst areas on the roads?
The dirt ones.
Gravelled ones.
The best section deck is right in front of your road. It's about 300 feet long.
And it's been out there for five years.
Three, maybe, yeah. I think three years, two years, a couple of years.
Okay, but you say, we've been, we haven't, we've had good weather, we've been lucky. We haven't had any floods, all that crap. You know, basically, how much, where are the worst areas on 17 miles of road that we have in Granville that you're gonna have to do the most work to secure it?
Probably the worst area that gets on the, on the roads is by Parkers out on North Hall Road. But that, we're gonna look into that for a grant to rehab that section of road. But we're ready for...
Is this related to the article that we're discussing? We're talking about the highway.
The highway funds.
Yeah.
Call the question too.
Right, isn't the question called?
Yeah, it was called.
It's called second.
There was a second. We should be moving forward, yes. Okay. It looked like we still wanted to discuss, so I just wanted to give that option. Okay. Open for a vote. Do we vote to move forward?
Article 4.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next, open Article 5. Shall the town of Granville vote to increase the municipal building investment fund in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of repainting the municipal complex? Move to, anybody move to open this?
Move to open.
Any discussion?
This line item we put in the last year or so, this whole building is gonna get, need to be repainted again. And by putting money in a dedicated fund to have it repainted, makes sense.
How much money is in the fund now? I believe it's $10,000.
Is it $10,000?
Not enough.
No.
You have a barn raising paint going down.
You can go on the steeper.
Yeah. I called the question.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Open the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that moves forward. Article 6, shall the town of Granville adopt a noise ordinance? Anybody move to open? Roger?
Yep.
Anybody second that?
Second.
Second, John Brown? Okay, any discussion on the noise ordinance?
Over the last couple of years, we've had complaints about noise, things in the middle of the night, explosions, fireworks. And this is more of an advisory question. To develop an ordinance, it's up to the select board to do an ordinance, have public hearings and all. But just because it's been an issue over the last few years, we decided we'd put this on the warning to have a town discussion on a noise ordinance. There's no detail on anything, and noise ordinances are difficult to enforce and it can be rather costly. So with that, I'll open up discussion.
Well, just the way the article's written, if we agree, then we have to adopt.
No, not at all. It's an advisory.
Over. That was mine.
We have a state ordinance, correct?
There's a state, there's state ordinances, absolutely. You can't be doing things in the middle of the night. You can't disturb the peace. But again, it is a very difficult thing to enforce. And Mark, you might want to jump in on this, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's, you know, I've talked to the state attorneys about this. It's one of those things they don't want to deal with for the most part. It's hard to prove. Nine times out of 10, they drop it and make it something else. The whole thing is a $50 fine, and they don't want to take the court's time for stuff like that for the most part, so. And like I said, it's hard to enforce, you know, who's, who's noisy to one person, but it might not be noisy to another person. What's the noise level? There's a lot of, a lot of leeway, a lot of gray areas is where the law is the problem. So it's, it's not widely enforced as current state law is right now.
And having our own ordinance would make it better? I don't understand what's important.
Different towns do have different ordinances. You know, a wedding venue may, you know, in Wakefield can't operate loud music after 10 o'clock at night. You know, some towns, you know, Burlington's going to all electric lawn mowers or whatever, you know, for noise. So there's, there's, different towns have jurisdiction to incorporate whatever, whatever they might. But like Mark says, you know, if there's things going on in the middle of the night, that's against state law, and it's so hard to enforce that anyway.
So putting, having our own noise ordinance would help that, or no, no?
We could, we could set a, we could set a fine, we could set other guidelines along with that if we wanted to, but that would have to be enforced. We'd have to have enforcement.
Administration for it, yeah.
We would have one.
Have to have a set of tickets to ticket for it.
Okay.
You would have to pay money.
It's a problem in certain neighborhoods in town. And, you know, it's more of a neighborly thing, you know? Neighbor's gotta...
Yeah, it sounds like it's more of like if people can't respect, like, time and obviously things in neighborhoods versus being able to police ourselves, we need to now bring in a higher...
Bringing in the last year, that's gotten improved, so.
Okay.
I believe.
The noise has improved?
Less. The problems of...
That's what I was gonna say, I don't think we really need a noise ordinance. I think any problems in the past have been pretty much talked about and dealt with, like Mark said, neighbor to neighbor.
I agree with Jim. I ran a recording studio out of our farm for 30 years, and nobody wants to hear the same guitar solo at midnight 30 times. So I did approach my neighbors to find out if, you know, bothered anybody, and they actually enjoyed it, so.
Did they give you earplugs? That's what my neighbors told me. I'm not opposed to this idea because I had a wedding venue next to me. There was words exchanged at 2:00 a.m. one night, so.
But that's under the state.
Yeah, that's on top of that. I'm not entirely opposed to at least to do something that would be necessary. Even though I know...
The issue with that and there's some of the other towns.
Yeah, and she left, so.
Yeah. But the, but the issue with, with that, even in some of the towns that have it, are, you know, decibel levels, you've gotta have your meters, you've gotta have somebody there to enforce it, you know, when it's happening. You know, it's, it's, it's not, it's not all that simple, I don't think. Even, even if you had that just for wedding venues.
Yeah, could it be a commercial sound ordinance?
Doing equipment.
Oh, yeah, no, you could make, you know, go get electric tractors, you know?
No harvesting carrots at midnight.
I'm not saying that, you know, but these are, these are the parameters that it could fall into, you know? Quiet times on Sundays, no cotton lawns on Sundays or something, you know? I mean, different towns, you look at the different towns that have stuff, and they do, they do have, they, there's a wide spectrum, but most of them are larger towns that have a police department, too.
Yeah, and they're different for other towns for residential areas, agriculture areas, and industrial areas, I mean, there's a lot to, lot to consider.
That's all zoning.
No, it's not.
All right, any other input or feedback or questions on this?
Is the current state law ordinance something that can be enforced by you, Mark, as a constable?
Like I said, I've looked into that, and after talking to the state's attorneys, it's not worth there for their lying to the sense. So it's the way the law's, it's awful gray, that was enforced. And, and there's no set time per se, but it's always been a general rule after 10 o'clock per se, but the way the law's written, it could be anytime. But there's so much gray in the state law. It'd have to be modified on the state level, really.
I think, just to add to that, I'm the moderator of that, but if you wanted to enforce it, you'd probably have to be your own legal counsel to enforce it against somebody else. So you could say that you cite the state law. That's the only time I've ever heard it actually working, in a business needed to do it with somebody, so. Sure or not?
And should the town try to enforce it, they'd have to use the town attorney, who is 200, whatever dollars an hour, you know?
All right, Victoria.
Call a question?
Second.
All right, open the vote. All of those in favor to...
So you want to state clearly what "I" means and what "may" means right now, right?
Yes, oh, yes, I will. So if we are to adopt a noise ordinance and move forward with reviewing it with the select board, it is a yes. If it is a no, then we do not move forward and review it with the select board. All of those in favor of moving it forward to review with the select board, say "aye." All of those, aye, one "aye"? Any other ayes? All of those opposed?
No.
And I appreciate your...
Well, I was gonna say, I think it's... May is something.
All right. Article 7, shall the town of Granville vote to authorize property taxes to be paid with the treasurer as provided by law in accordance with dominance with due dates being August 14th, November 13th, February 12th, and May 14th? To open this article, do I have a...
So...
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Call a cost to the question.
Second.
Okay, open to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Article 8. Shall the town of Granville vote that overdue taxes will bear interest at a rate of 1% per month or a fraction thereof for the first three months, and therefore 1 and 1/2% per month or a fraction thereof from the due date of such tax pursuant 32 VSA 5136?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
All right, any discussion items on that? Any questions?
Call a question?
Second.
All right, open to vote to move forward? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we move that forward. All right, Article 10, is there any other business that anybody would like to bring up?
I can't let the meeting end.
No, it's okay.
More Mars. I don't...
Well, they should know you.
I'm hiding these days. We've got to recognize Bruce.
Yes.
How many years on the select board, Bruce?
I don't know, was it nine years, is it? Yeah.
Wow. 15, 12, whatever like that.
School board.
Chair of the school board. Yeah, for that, so that goes back into the nineties. Bruce has done a lot damn good work for this town. And he's put a lot of time and energy into it, and we're darn lucky that we've had him all these years. And he's gonna hang on as an auditor, apparently, but...
That was a treasurer.
I just can't let the meeting end without commending Bruce for all the work he's done for the town.
Thank you.
Well, seconding that, but I also want to say, representing the Corner School, one thing that I hear when we're talking about noise and stuff is the sense, isn't it nice to all be here this evening? Wasn't it great to be together and, and to visit each other? And I think, you know, when we come together as a community, we are a much stronger group, and we begin to appreciate each other no matter what our differences are. And that is what the Corner School is trying to be in the community. On the third Thursday of the month, we're showing a movie. It's a movie selected by a member of our community.
It's a mystery.
It's not a mystery, the mystery is what is the movie? And it's been really fun, and Diane Aaron has made this fabulous food. Did you just come to that? The next one is on March 20th, which happens to be the beginning of spring. It's also the beginning of March Madness. But you should come to the Corner School and get some nice hot soup and some fresh baked goods and watch a movie in a group of people the way the movie got some presented.
We have a couch, too.
We're not doing it for the couch.
Yes, popcorn, too.
There's popcorn.
Popcorn, help the couch.
And prior to that, on March 19th, those who need your shots, actually, your dogs need your shots. The rabies clinic's going on March 19th down at the Hancock Firehouse, 5 to 7. So if you hadn't seen the posters here.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
Hallelujah. I'm... Second.
All right. All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? We adjourned.